Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thursday, May 8th, 2025 work session of the Hymn Riko County Public Schools School Board. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would remain standing as you're able for a moment of silence. And that concludes our moment of silence. You may be seated.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Colleagues, is there a motion?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kinsella. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda is to move into closed session. Colleagues, is there a motion?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under item A1 of section 2.2 through 3.711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific school board employees, including a personnel hearing for employee case number 24-25-e-3.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Young. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are now in closed session. We will resume an open meeting at the conclusion of closed session. Welcome back to the Thursday, May 8th, 2025 work session of the Hymn Riko County School Board. Colleagues, do we have a certification of closed session?
I move that the school board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each school board members' knowledge, only business, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Young, for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Closed session has been certified. Dr. Cashwell?
Thank you. For the first item, I'm recommending that the school board approve the petition for license revocation in employee case number 24-25-e-3 and authorize the petition to be forwarded to the State Board of Education.
Colleagues, do you have a motion?
I move that the school board approve the petition for licensure revocation in employee case number 24-25-e-3.
Moved by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Ms. Kinsella.
Sorry. Moved by Ms. Kinsella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Young. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The petition has been passed.
For the next item, I'm recommending that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel.
Colleagues, is there a motion?
I move that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel.
Moved by Mr. Irving. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kinsella. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The administrators have been appointed.
All right. The board has appointed Ashley Council, Principal at Dumbarton Elementary School; Sarah Blackburn, Principal Ridge Elementary School; Nicole Freund, Principal Rivers Edge Elementary School; and Leanna Moss, Everheart Principal at Verina Elementary School. For the next item, we have an update on the proposed 26-27 school calendar that you have previously seen and we've held discussion on and will be seeking your approval of at our next meeting.
Great. Well, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. This afternoon, I'm pleased to bring back to you the proposed 2026-2027 calendar for your final review and consideration. As I shared in detail at the March 27th work session, the development of the proposed calendar was a truly collaborative and iterative effort this year, which included a wide variety of stakeholders and a great deal of input. Our HCPS Calendar Committee began meeting last fall to initiate conversations, shape the community survey, and develop recommendations. This year, we also engaged some of our advisory committees in new ways to gather their feedback, including feedback from our student and teacher advisories. As we shared with you previously, the feedback we received from our students and teachers highlighted the need for more clerical time in the calendar and the benefits of a staggered start, which would provide a different type of start to the year for our pre-K, K, 6th and 9th grade students as they adjust to new buildings and routines and begin building relationships with peers and teachers alike. As we do each year, we also administered an online survey to provide our entire community an opportunity to provide feedback. This survey helps affirm some of our ongoing practices, such as our Thanksgiving break structure and our religious holidays. This was also the third year in which we requested feedback around a staggered start for our pre-K, kindergarten, 6th and 9th grade students, and we saw growing community support for that model. Based on all of the feedback received, the proposed changes to the 26-27 calendar include the implementation of the staggered start, moving professional learning earlier in the year, and adding a full person in-person clerical day in between the first and second semester. These recommendations have not changed since the March discussion. The entire calendar as proposed is attached in Board Docs. And that concludes my formal presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that board members may have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Coy. Colleagues, I know this is our, I think, second, third, second review of the calendar. Any additional comments on the calendar? None from this side? Any from this side? Okay. Well, I have a couple. First of all, thank you for your work on this calendar. I'll say, I think I shared last time personally, like, this idea of a staggered start needed to win me over. Fortunately, we've seen it a handful of years at this point, so I, and it seems as long as, as well as the survey respondents have warmed up to the staggered start, but when it comes down to it, this calendar is responsive to staff needs and things that we heard really being intentional, taking it to various staff groups, asking, even outside the calendar, asking, what do you need? How can we support you? And these things rose to the top, and we've made those adjustments. And so, and then also asking our parents, how does this, you know, fit in with your needs and your schedule as well? So, I just want to thank you and the calendar team committee for being so responsive to the needs that have risen out of staff feedback and parent feedback. So, while, you know, some of these might, some pieces of it, like a half-day here there may not be my personal preference, right? We're listening to what the staff and the stu-, and the parents have advocated for as being best for our students and our families and our staff. And so, thank you for that. Anything else? All right. Awesome.
All right. For the next item, we have a strategic plan update, another item you've seen quite a bit of as we've developed our next strategic plan, which will take us from 2025 to 2030 and we close out Destination 2025.
All right. Well, wonderful. So, today, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Cashwell, Dr. Hinton is going to give us an update on our strategic planning efforts that started in the fall of 2023. After a thorough year and a half plan development process with many opportunities for input and feedback, we are thrilled to be sharing the final version and to be asking for school board approval of the plan at tonight's meeting. As you know, the school division's current strategic plan will expire at the end of this school year. When we started developing our new plan, the goal was to build on the successes of Destination 2025 and continue driving our progress forward. We recognized that the plan's success would depend on the collaborative efforts from students, staff, families, and the community reflecting our shared aspirations and needs. Since the fall of 2023, we have actively engaged the community to refine our vision, mission, and core values. We organized numerous focus groups and gathered insights through surveys to identify our strengths and areas for growth. Throughout the school year, we collaborated with the Strategic Plan Steering Committee and work groups to develop strategic focus areas, goals, and detailed plans, which were shared for community feedback in April. This evening, we will seek school board approval for the proposed Hymn Riko County Public Schools Strategic Plan 2025-2030, followed by a launch of the new plan to our school leaders and community during the summer. The plan development process involved extensive input and feedback from various groups. Initial insights were gathered from focus groups on the division's purpose and values, and broader community input was gathered through our annual surveys. Throughout the school year, the Strategic Plan Steering Committee and work groups refined the plan's components, identified focus areas and goals, and developed strategies and measures of success. Once a comprehensive proposed plan had been developed, in April, in-person and online feedback opportunities were provided, and we met with several advisory groups to solicit feedback. These efforts ensured that the plan reflects the community's diverse perspectives and needs. The proposed plan was available for public comment from April 10th through the 25th, and a summary report of the feedback is available in Board Docs. The excerpts shown on this slide are just a few highlights from the feedback received. Some of the feedback noted that the vision, mission, and core values are clear and focused on students, equity, and belonging. Teachers also appreciated the inclusive message. Regarding focus areas and goals, there was strong support for preparing students for both academic and non-academic challenges, excitement about the focus on individualized pathways, and positive feedback on the learning environment and the inclusion of mental and emotional health. The importance of staff feeling appreciated and heard with a focus on retention was also highlighted. The plan format itself was praised for its clarity and simplicity. This slide highlights recommendations received on the proposed plan. Many of the recommendations received included specific details and examples that can be used to guide the implementation of the new plan rather than inclusion in the plan itself. For the vision, mission, and core values, there was discussion about whether to include the term equity in the plan, with some suggesting another word might be more appropriate while maintaining focus on this area. Regarding focus areas and goals, recommendations included additional staffing to fully implement the new plan. There was also emphasis on supporting and rewarding educators. For the planned format, feedback suggested that shorter action steps needed more clarity, baseline data should be provided, and a glossary was needed to clarify terms. We greatly appreciate the community's input throughout the process, including the support of Ms. Shea and Mr. Irving in their service on the Strategic Plan Steering Committee. The feedback gathered over the last year and a half has been invaluable in shaping this plan. Since sharing the draft in April, we have made several changes, including incorporating clarifying language where needed and adding a glossary to help clarify terms used throughout the plan. Additionally, we will share the collected feedback with division leaders as they develop implementation plans, ensuring they are aware of the community's input and can integrate it into their work. This feedback will also be used to inform our communications about the progress of the plan, fostering transparency and ongoing engagement. Once approved, we will work closely with our communications team to ensure the community has a strong awareness of the work ahead, including regular updates on our progress. Lastly, we are thrilled to unveil the new strategic plan logo created by our communications team. This logo embodies the journey ahead and our unwavering commitment to students' success. The colors are aligned with an Riko learner profile, symbolizing our dedication to equipping students with the knowledge, skills, and experiences they need to be ready for life. Once approved by the school board, the final plan will be branded accordingly. And that concludes the presentation, and at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hinton, for your presentation and your exhaustive work on this over the past couple of years. I'll start to my left with Ms. Atkins.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for your work. I like the new logo. I like the triangle. It symbolizes many things, and so I think it is appropriate here, but thank you for your work.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Dr. Hinton, as well, for the work. I've seen everything that everyone has put into this over a year and a half, so I'm excited to vote on this this evening. And I did read that comment, should we have equity in the plan, and I see equity as a core value, so I'm glad we were intentional enough and bold enough in this timeframe to keep that as part of our core values at HCPS, so I'm excited about this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Irving?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I was very glad to have been a part of this committee and seen this kind of go through the process and be involved with it. It was a wonderful experience. I did see, and I did like, in the implementation considerations in the focus areas and goals, something that I have said up here previously, the commitment to lowering class sizes by increasing teacher allotments per school and trying to set that at a given classroom level that we're wanting. However, I did not see that make it into the plan itself. So, would you like to just note that I, that's something that I would like in there? I do think that's important for us to be constantly striving to, you know, effectively ensure that our, that our core competencies, especially in secondary, are not going above a certain size and setting our staffing levels at those, you know, to create those appropriate class sizes. Otherwise, you know, I think everything's great. I would, you know, echo what my colleague, Mr. Young, said about equity. I think it's important for that to be included. It's a core value. It's something we believe in, and we should never shy away from that. Yeah, everything else is great, and thank you for all of this.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. Ms. Kinsella?
Yes, I concur with my colleagues, and I hear you on the lowering of class sizes. I believe that's also in our public comment feedback as well today, and I know it's something that each of the board members have spoken about. Do we feel, and I know the process over the past year and a half has been exhaustive, but do we, we still feel confident even though just 141 individuals participated in the community survey? Do we feel that's, that justifies moving forward and approving it, that we truly have heard from our community? I mean, and again, going back to the slide that shows how many focus groups and committees and just how exhaustive the process was, if you could just speak to your confidence level?
So, throughout the year and a half process, it hasn't just been a one-and-done feedback opportunity, right? So, we've had multiple opportunities to engage in focus groups with our advisory committees, our superintendent committees. We've had several iterations of surveys, so this one has not been the only one. We've collected input through our annual survey. We had a survey back in December to collect input on our core values there and our vision and our mission. And then we gathered input again this spring in both the form of meeting again with some of our advisory committees as well as that survey. So, while that survey didn't have a lot of responses, there were multiple opportunities throughout the process to engage.
And I'd just like to highlight how it's just the language in it is, I appreciate the glossary of terms, you know, response to feedback, but also the language being used is easy to understand, which came specifically from our superintendent student advisory committee, that the students basically said, hey, it needs to be, this document is not something that any student would want to read, and just the readability of it. So, thank you. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. Again, I just want to thank you, Dr. Hinton and Ms. Coy, for your exhaustive work with this and as well as Dr. Cashwell's commitment to this strategic plan. I know in Slide 7, you gave a little bit of ways you've responded to feedback, but to be honest, that doesn't even really begin to touch how many things you have adjusted with, with feedback. It has been iterative, meaning you took it out there, you took it to committees, you heard feedback, you adjusted it, you took it back out, you heard more input, you adjusted it. It's been a continual draft, being edited and being responsive, you know, again, the word responsive, like we talked about with the calendar and some other things, being responsive to staff feedback and parent feedback and student feedback. I don't think there's one stakeholder group that you did not touch multiple times, and while some people may not have been, all stakeholders were represented in all of the focus groups and the committees, but if a certain individual wasn't, they had the opportunity to participate in surveys. So, literally, everyone in this county has gotten the opportunity to have their voice heard in different ways, and so, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for being responsive, because we know as a board that this isn't just a document full of words. We really use this to drive the direction of the division with presentations to the board. Dr. Cashwell has been very intentional the past at least five years on showing how each item brought forth in the budget or other updates aligns with our strategic plan and is driving towards those goals that we've all agreed to. And so, this is truly an important, an important document. And, you know, to echo some of my colleagues' support of the, of equity being one of our core values, I appreciate that not only did we use the word equity, but we defined it in terms of what we want to see for that in Hymn Riko. We didn't just throw out a word. We gave it context, and we gave it teeth, and we gave it meat to say, we create opportunities so all students will engage in meaningful learning that meets their unique needs. So, anyway, no questions. I've given you plenty of those along the way, just appreciation and just highlighting some of the, the details of the work that y'all have done. Anything else, colleagues? Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Next, you'll see the return of a number of policy-related items that have previously been reviewed. First, we'll look at 6.03 through 6.17. This is a batch of policies of which there is a summary provided in Board Docs and, again, have previously been brought before the board. That involves some language updates, a consolidation, as well as some additional language related to a comprehensive review of policies related to contracts and compensation, and we'd be seeking your approval of those at this evening's meeting.
Dr. Cashwell, I believe these have been out for review since March. It's, I'm getting a nod from our policy guru over there. Since March. I know you, you all got a lot of feedback on the front end as these policies were drafted and reviewed. Have we gotten any additional feedback through kind of our policy email, where we get it put? Have we gotten additional feedback since it's been posted? Not specifically to the proposed language here. All the feedback was on the front end, so nothing further since the first review. Great. Thank you so much. Colleagues, do you have any questions on this batch? I know we had some questions first go around. Any additional questions on our second review? All right. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you. The next policy is a first look or review at a new proposed policy, P9-28 Take Home Vehicle Program. And this really aligns with current practice, and, again, we wouldn't be seeking your approval on this until June 12th, but wanted to bring it forth for your review at this time and happy to take any questions.
Colleagues, any questions on this policy? Ms. Atkins?
I did have a question on Section 4, limitations on HCPS vehicle use. It's a minor recommendation, but one that I think you may want to explore. It says vehicles may be used to travel to and from lunch if the distance traveled is reasonable. I think we want to have a conversation on what reasonable means, and I think we may want to explore, instead of specifically saying lunch, perhaps just say meals. So, just two things I think that may become very important as folks utilize this opportunity to have that defined just a little bit better.
Great. We'll take a look at that. Ms. Kinsella?
I have a question, just in follow-up to what Ms. Atkins just requested. I believe during polit-, when we discuss this policy in policy committee, are we not trying to be in alignment with our government counterparts also on this policy?
Correct.
Could you provide some?
Sure.
A description on that, please, for me?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So, as you'll see, both the policy and the reg are all in red ink. They are new proposed policies to govern an existing program, and as we developed the policy, you're exactly right, Ms. Kinsella, we strove to align with county policy for their take-home vehicle program. I can't speak to the intersection on those particular notes that you raised, Ms. Atkins, but happy to look into it and, while maintaining that alignment.
Yeah, I'll give you a few examples of the differences between what the county government does and what our HCPS bus drivers do, and whether it's, and perhaps government employees offer rise for extracurricular activities, recreational activities, or athletic programming. However, for those that do, and they take home vehicles, it may be that they're going to get dinner while a sport or some other activity is taking place. So, I don't know. I'm bringing this forward because I can see how, if this specifically says lunch, and yet we have individuals that are providing and take home vehicles for other things, it may end up being another meal outside of lunch. So, I just think to be covered, just say meals, but explore it. Perhaps the policy committee and the government side also do similar activities. That's where the, you know, Ms. Shea and Ms. Kinsella, that's where you will be exploring that, and then defining what reasonable means, means maybe having some level of definition to go along with this, because to assume that a person understands that going from here to Short Pump is reasonable, they would be right if it's not defined. So, that is my recommendation for the policy committee to explore.
We will do that.
Anything else, colleagues, on this? Thanks, and as a reminder, this is not part of the consent agenda tonight, as this is just our first review. Superintendent?
All right. Thank you. The next item is a review of the fee and tuition schedules for the upcoming school year, for which we'd be seeking your approval. And Mr. Wack will come forward to provide an overview of that. I know you've, we've previously shared information related to this proposal and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Good afternoon. So, before the school board, we have two schedules, one for mandatory fees and one for voluntary fees. The mandatory fees does include language around our out-of-county tuition, which would be increasing slightly based on our budget to $6,200 next year, and there are some other minor changes. They're all essentially related to cost recovery for the program offerings. Happy to answer any specific questions.
Colleagues, any questions about the fee schedule? Ms. Kinsella?
I just have a question, number 11, senior health and medical health assistance.
This is a new program offering. That's why it's showing up as a new item that's being offered through our programs.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Atkins?
And so, what's exciting is that our commitment to hands-on learning remains strong and commendable. I do notice the significant increase in certain areas, and specifically, driver's education, family, and consumer sciences, trade and industrial education, and class due specifically for our seniors of 12th grade. I was wondering if we offer sliding scale fees for the higher-cost programs?
So, for driver's education, the fees would not be increasing, but in terms of when, when, when students aren't, are able to demonstrate that they have, they have financial challenges that we can allow for the waiving of some fees in certain areas? If you had something specific, maybe we could follow up?
Thank you for that correction. I just went back to validate it, so it's not driver's ed, so thank you for that.
Okay.
The other area that I wanted to ask about or thoughts on to assist with cost is if we collaborate with local employers or even trade unions to sponsor toolkits or for uniforms. Do we do that specifically for a school, or can we do this more broadly as a district?
I'll note, and we can follow up certainly with some more detail. I do know that many of our business partners, particularly those who partner in the trades with some hands-on work experiences, apprenticeships, and ultimately, many of our students become employed, which is wonderful, as we saw at Signing Day. They will often provide They will often provide access to tools, kits, equipment, et cetera, for students to use while they're in training, and then even gift them those as part of their package as they go into employment. And I know Mr. Wack noted that someone who may have financial need, that there are considerations made, and I know that particularly with many of these hands-on programs, as you've noted, in career and technical education, the foundation and the staff in our CTE programs are really good at understanding and getting to known needs and helping bridge that gap and make sure individuals who want to participate in the program have access to the tools they may need if the fee is a barrier.
I think that's outstanding, especially for those that are already in the program and have decided to be a part of the program. Offering a perspective of a lens of a student or family that may not be as astute to what the program offers. So for the family that's looking at the list of options of discussion for what they want to enter into, and then they see the schedule, it may be a deterrent. So I wonder if collectively as a division, do we share or what our process is to share that we have these partnerships in advance, and perhaps that happens with counseling?
That's a great point, and I'll certainly follow up with our team and make sure that, particularly as they're out, I know they do a lot of recruitment across our schools and middle schools even to get kids excited about these programs and have communication for families. We can make sure we're including information so that this wouldn't be a deterrent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, anything else on this item? Thank you, Mr. Irving.
Yes, so the out-of-county tuition for approved variances, under what circumstances would someone pay this?
For example, if a senior in high school, their parents move halfway through the school year, we can prorate this tuition if they want to maintain, if they're a resident of another county but want to finish out the school year. That would be an example, and again, we--
It's a rare circumstance.
Yeah, okay. And how much do we spend per pupil?
14, six-ish? Yeah, I think that sounds about right. So this is covering the non-state portion of--
So it seems like a pretty good, pretty good deal if you have to do it, though.
Yes, and I believe we have approximately 60 of our employees that are taking advantage of the clause there at the bottom as a recruitment and retention tool.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'll tag on to that to say that I am delighted to see this continue to be in our budget for our employees, students, to be able to bring them, if they live out of the county, to Henrico schools. I think our employees are, they invest so much of their time and their heart into our schools. I fully support them being able to bring their own children to benefit from their passions. So, yeah.
If I may, Mr. Wack, how long have we been waiving this fee? I know this is an annual schedule that comes forth before the board, but how long has the board, hasn't it been at least three years that we've been providing this opportunity for our employees?
Yes, I believe this will be the third year, yes.
Thank you.
Excellent, yeah, I get emails from a few employees in my district every year as they're looking at options. They're like, do you think this is going to be in the budget? And I say, you know, I can't say until, you know, for sure until we approve it, but just heard really good feedback from some of the educators in my district about this. So, okay. Other items? Thank you, Mr. Wack.
All right, the next item, don't go too far, Mr. Wack. It is an opportunity to review the proposed school meal price increases. They're nominal increases, though, for the upcoming school year, and as noted in the material shared with the board, you know, these are minor increases that are necessary due to making sure we're keeping pace with rising costs, but still remain competitive and even lower than most of our neighboring counties. Mr. Wack?
Yes, so we're seeking School Board approval to increase the school, the student breakfast price 25 cents to $1.75, and for lunches, full price to $3, increased it by 10 cents, $3. We have actually held back on increasing our breakfast and lunch prices in recent years despite the inflation, and so this is just a portion of cost recovery for the school system. And as Dr. Cashwell mentioned, we're either at or below all of our neighboring counties when it comes to these prices, and I'm not sure if they're going to increase them for next year, but that's for the current, our new prices will be at or below their current year prices.
Thank you, Mr. Wack. I appreciate the context of how it compares to other divisions. Also, just for clarity, which it says in the boilerplate, but this is for the full-price meals. Students who would receive free or reduced meals would not pay this cost as well as our CEP schools, correct?
Correct. So the students that are 49 CEP school, Community Eligibility Provisioned Schools do not pay this, and then those that qualify for free reduced lunch, it is free, there isn't a reduced price, so we've been able to grant those meals for free.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, questions about this? Ms. Atkins?
So while we're on the topic of nutrition, this is not specific to the meal cost. However, Dr. Cashwell, I would like to hear an update on the quality of nutrition in the foods that we serve our students. So as we talk about cost going up, I think it's key that we also talk about the quality of the food that we're serving.
Absolutely, and I know the board's aware that we have to follow very specific guidelines related to our school nutrition programming and FDA, related to sugar and fat content and salt content, and so our meals are certainly, every meal that we serve meets those guidelines. And as you'll recall, there have been a number of fun initiatives over the past few years to really encourage students as they're making selections on the food line, to even go for the fresh fruits and veggies, you know, with unlimited fruit and veggie bars and those sorts of things. I know that school nutrition has had a couple of other initiatives underway, also just to help entice students to take advantage of the school lunch program rather than maybe a snack from the snack machine, if you will. So I will certainly provide you and board members an update on their efforts.
Thank you for that. I think, you know, as we talk about cost increase and align the quality of what we serve too, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Any, no, Mr. Irving?
So I think it's wonderful that we've held off on increasing the cost of this for as long as was feasible. I'm looking particularly at the adult prices, and having been an adult in a building who has paid this price before, what do we, and you may not know the answer to this, but I'm going to put on my economics teacher hat, what do we think the price elasticity for the adult lunch is? Like, at what point would we, if we were to increase it, do you think we would lose more than we gain by increasing the price?
So the School Board doesn't necessarily need to act on the adult prices, but I will say they have been increasing.
Sure.
So they increased to the current year, to where we are, and then we mentioned in the boilerplate, yes, it's going up to $2.85 and to $4.85 next year in terms of elasticity. It seems like--
Well, the question is more so like, would we be able to increase them enough to offset some of the student prices, or is the volume just not there from the amount of adults that we have purchasing?
I think it's really based on cost recovery, and we actually have employees that ask, why do I have to pay to eat with my students? But that's, yeah, not how the program is designed.
But it's a good deal.
Yes.
And it's a great lunch.
It's a great deal, that's why I was asking about it.
You can get lunch for less than $5.
Yeah.
Ms. Consella?
Mr. Wack, just briefly, because I know board members have more information than is presented on this slide, these prices don't just reflect the cost of the food, correct? Don't they also cover employee costs, some of our employee costs?
The whole--
School Nutrition Services has approximately 500 employees, so yes, that's part of the cost of operating the system. So overall, our School Nutrition Fund is primarily funded by federal funds, there's a small state component, but no local taxes, but it's, again, based on cost recovery.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure everyone had a chance. Thank you, Mr. Wack.
All right, members of the board, that concludes items from me.
Thank you, Superintendent. The next item on our agenda is unfinished business. Colleagues, any? The next item on the agenda is new business. Ms. Atkins?
So colleagues, I do have three items to bring before you today for conversation now or perhaps conversation later. The first concern that I want to share is around implementation and accountability measures related to marijuana use and vaping. I have received more conversations and feedback around the use of marijuana use and vaping. So one thing that I would like for the board, as well as Dr. Cashwell and the leadership team, to consider is perhaps evaluating and potentially upgrading our smoke detection and prevention systems to better address some of this. I am aware of vape detection devices. They have smart sensors in them and perhaps putting them in the restrooms, but wanted to just bring that to your attention for consideration, thought, and discussion. The second is around, and specifically, Ms. Shea and Ms. Consella, I know this is more of your wheelhouse because you're on the Policies Committee, so something just to consider is around Lyft and Uber, because we're in the Lyft and Uber and ride-share world now. I have seen an uptick in students using Lifts and Ubers to get to school, and so I'm wondering from a policy perspective and keeping our students safe, if some level of a requirement of written parental consent, particularly those who are under the age of 18, something to look into. The other area is perhaps having a designated zone on campus for Lifts and Ubers and ride shares. I don't know currently if we have anything in policy around this, but I'm giving it to the board, again, just for exploration, something to think about and perhaps a discussion later on. The last one here is something that I've had several conversations about, and I share this from a place of deep care for our students and ask that the board consider appointing student representatives, and they would be selected from amongst our student body to serve in a non-voting advisory capacity. Of course, the terms and structure would be created by the board and discussed, but I definitely want us to consider this. I think this opportunity would not only enrich our understanding as a board, but also nurture a generation of students so that they feel seen and heard. So giving this to you with the, hoping you have a willingness to listen, deeply take time to consider it, and perhaps at another time, or if you want to discuss any of what I've brought forth in this moment to discuss now.
Colleagues, anything you would like to discuss in this moment or any other new business?
So I just wanted to touch on the ride-share component for a second. My question is, why do we think the ride shares are occurring? Because one thing that comes to my mind, having coached football, is that can often occur when kids are not living in the zone that they say that they're living in, and they're not able to drive, and are we, you know, looking into--
Yeah, so I can speak on behalf of Arina Sandston Highland Springs, since I was elected, transportation is a constant issue. And whether you're a working family, a Lyft or ride-share option might be what you use to get your kid to school. And so I think there's a combination of reasons why a Lyft or ride-share may be used, whether it's for school or recreational activity, and they're valid to me, the use. What I'm bringing forward is making sure that we keep our students safe that use this option, and especially if you're not 18. If you're under the age of 18, I wonder if there is something as a school division that we help keep them safe, especially, you know, leaving school, hopping in a ride-share would be very difficult to track them because they're not on a bus, and we may not have anything in their file to reflect how they left the building. So I'm giving this to you as, I hope that answered your question, but I see, Ryan, you wanted--
Yeah, I would chime in along with Ms. Atkins, a lot of after-school and before-school events is where we see a lot of Lyft and Ubers. Just speaking as a coach, we practice at 6:30 in the morning, half my team would arrive on a Uber or Lyft. So I do, I would like to explore this a little bit to see where we can kind of take this, but it is quite popular in Fairfield District for after-school activities or morning activities that happen prior to school.
That was my point of clarification, was do we also see this happening during the school day because a parent can't get the student? Okay, so that makes a lot more sense, yeah.
I was just going to add that I know in the Brooklyn District, I've had students use alternative methods of transportation if they've missed Henrico transportation, right, provided during the school day to them, that I've seen that or heard about it at the secondary level. But thank you for bringing that forward, Ms. Atkins.
Colleagues, any other items? All right, hearing none, we have reached the last item on the agenda, which is the announcement of upcoming meetings. Our next meeting will be our monthly meeting tonight at 6:30 PM, right here in the New Bridge Auditorium, or livestreamed.